Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, July 13th Board of Commissioners meeting. We are going to, again, call things order at 10:00 a.m., and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America. Which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and justice for all.
As you all know by now, Commissioner Higgins is joining us via phone. So we have a conference line set up, and he's dialing in. And Mark, just a quick sound check. Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, and hearing it just fine. Thanks, Mike.
Fantastic. Okay, thanks, Mark. All right. We're going to move into public comment. For anybody who is here to comment on any items that we do not have on the agenda, is there any public comment at this time? We are seeing no one here from the public. We will, if anybody would arrive, will take public comment under each item as it's under consideration. We'll move now to the approval of our minutes from the July 6th Board of Commissioners meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from the July 6th Board of Commissioners meeting.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the minutes? Hearing none? All in favor of approving the minutes, do so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. All right. So we're going to head into Proclamation 22 of 2021, and we are going to be proclaiming July this month as Park and Recreation Month, and also specifically July 16th as Pennsylvania Park and Recreation Professionals' Day here in Center County. And we are joined by two individuals who are spending much time out in the parks and helping us improve our parks and raise awareness. We have Emily Schnellball and also Nikki Torchur with us today. So good morning to both of you. We'll turn it over to you to tell us a little bit about the things that are happening here in Center County in Pennsylvania as it relates to park and rec.
Great. Thank you for having us.
Sure.
Pennsylvania Recreation, or I'm sorry, Park and Recreation Professionals' Day started three years ago by the Pennsylvania Recreation and Parks Society. It's essentially a day to celebrate park and recreation professionals and volunteers such as aquatics professionals, maintenance programmers, and it's really a day to acknowledge and recognize their hard work. So if you're out in your park any day of the year, but especially on July 16th, just say thank you to your local park and rec professionals. It is a part of a larger month celebration across the nation, National Recreation and Parks Association, dedicated at July as National Park and Recreation Professionals' Month. So we're excited that Park and Rec Professionals' Day went national in 2020. Of course, due to COVID, we didn't get to celebrate quite as much as we wanted to, but parks were definitely used to full force during COVID, and we just want to acknowledge even greater this year all the hard work and dedication.
And we also have new this year, we, in each of our districts, we are offering, we are recognizing our park spotlight celebrations. We just had one in Cranberry Township, and then we have one this Thursday in Mechanicsburg Area Parks and Rec, and on Friday, Park and Rec Professionals' Day, we have one in Moreington Township. So that's something new this year. We also offer a, an outreach toolkit to all of our park and rec professionals to use, which includes some blog posts, social media sample posts, some logos, a proclamation template, and you can find all of that on our website at www dot PRPS dot org.
Fantastic. We are really blessed here in Center County and across Pennsylvania to have a really rich park system, and we see many people getting out to enjoy the fresh air and more so than ever. So we thank you for the work you do to raise awareness and look forward to keeping, enjoying our parks here in our community. Absolutely.
It appears that the sales of outdoor recreation equipment are at all-time highs, so people are out and about using all manner of outdoor recreation equipment. So that has to have an influence on your ability to operate with so many people utilizing the facilities that we have. How are we doing out there?
Absolutely. I know that many of our agencies look for grant funding to secure equipment, and in 2020, a lot of the equipment was delayed. So now they're finally starting to catch up, and people are able to get back on bikes and out on the water in kayaks and canoes and even pedalboards. So hopefully that will all come back full swing very soon. But in the meantime, if they can't find the equipment, especially in Center County, I walk at Tallyrand every day, but our parks are used for dog walkers, just for socializing, so they really are like essential to our healthy living.
Commissioner Higgins, any comments?
Sure. We definitely would like to thank the park and recreational professionals in Center County. It's been a tough 15 months, and I know a lot of people were relying on visiting the great outdoors to kind of stay sane and keep themselves healthy. And, you know, it was a tough time, but the parks and recreational professionals kept the parks open, kept the trash emptied, kept the paths clean, and helped all of us get through it. We appreciate it.
So with that, we will look for a motion to adopt Proclamation 22, again, proclaiming the month as Park and Recreation Month and the day, this upcoming Friday, as Pennsylvania Parks and Recreation Professionals' Day.
Motion to adopt Proclamation Number 22 of 2021, proclaiming July as Park and Recreation Month and July 16th as Pennsylvania Parks and Recreation Professionals' Day in Center County.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye? The motion is carried. The motion is carried. Okay. Thank you both once again. We appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for coming in. Keep us having fun out there.
We will try.
There you go.
We're going to welcome up at this time our warden of our correctional facility, Christopher Shell, and he has two items to discuss with us at this time. Good morning, Warden.
Good morning, everyone. We're here this morning to propose a contract with Penn State Psychology Department to provide psychological consulting to our services for our officers as well as our incarcerated individuals. The proposal is for $16,875 hours, which will, is funded by InKind Services, and this is for the period January 1 of 2021 to June 30 of 2022. Our second one is a contract with Appalachian Construction Services, LLC, to service and repair the Rockwell Animation Door Security System. The contract total was for $36,578.06 for a total period of August 1 of 2021 through December 31 of 2023. We had a contract with Rockwell, with Shaler Yesco, which ended on August 1st, which would cost us $23,000. Their new contract would have went up to $43,000, so working with our facility management team and finding the company that can work on our system and everything else at a better rate.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Warden. Appreciate that. Any questions, comments for the warden? Okay. Hearing none? Is there a motion to add these both to next week's consent agenda?
To add Correctional Facility Items 1 and 2 to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion or questions? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye? The motion is carried. All right. Aye. Great. Thank you again, Warden. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. For Human Services, we have one contract with our Aging Office, and we have Ken and Quinton here today. Okay. Good mornings, both you gentlemen.
How are you guys this morning?
We're good. How are you?
Great. Okay.
Well, thank you for having us here today. We're here to discuss with you a contract addendum with the Nutrition Group, which allows us a six-month extension to provide meals at $4.38 a meal. That's a negotiated rate. It gets us, it allows us to be prepared for the next renewal.
This is the home-delivered meals program?
It is. It's the home-delivered meals program. Yes. The contract total is $185,000. It's funded by both the state and federal government equally, and so there's no county fill on that. And the period is from July 1 of 2021 to December 31 of 2021.
Thank you, Ken. And in terms of the renewal, would we be looking at doing another three-year one beginning for 2022?
I think three to five years is what's being recommended by the state. There's advantages and disadvantages to each, and so a final decision hasn't been made, but most likely a three-year.
A multi-year. We could say a multi-year. Okay.
They also do where they can do, you can re-up after the three years if everybody's in the crane.
Got it. Okay. Yeah.
Maybe, can you speak to the importance of these home-delivered meals to our senior population?
Absolutely. So especially what we've gone through with the COVID pandemic, people haven't been able to get out even more, so it's even been more of an importance. And the ability to not only provide meals, but even in some cases, provide additional meals, is really the difference between sometimes keeping somebody home and keeping them healthy. So I really think it's a fantastic program that we're able to provide to our seniors in Center County.
So essentially, you're working to keep people out of other long-term facilities and keeping them at home where they're much more comfortable, no doubt.
Absolutely. Allowing people to age in place.
It speaks very, very highly of the importance of this program.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments on the contract addendum? Okay. Hearing none? We look for a motion. Motion to add it to next week's consent agenda.
Motion to add the contract addendum with the Nutrition Group to next week's consent agenda.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye? The motion is carried. Thank you, gentlemen, both again. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. We have one grant item today, and this is the bookend of this grant we've had for quite some time. And we're going to welcome up Liz Loos to talk about this and a closeout report. It's a long time coming. We appreciate all the work that's been done on this, Liz, and...
Yeah, it is a long time coming. So I thank you for your consideration this morning so we can submit the closeout report for this grant. The grant technically expired on June 30th, so it is customary, upon expiration of the grant, you can proceed forward with the, you know, grant closeout. Luckily, it's only a one-page document in which we reference the four projects that were all funded. All the background work and paperwork is ready to be submitted to DCED, which includes all the invoicing and contractor documents. So we'll package that together, get it sent to DCED, and be hopeful that we don't have any other communication with them and close a chapter on this.
Excellent. Any questions, comments on the closeout grant report? Hearing none?
Sounds very well organized.
Okay. And we look then for a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to add the submission of the grant closeout report to DCED to next week's consent agenda.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Motion is carried. Thank you, Liz. Thank you. All right. We have our consent agenda in front of us today. Anything we'd like to discuss on that before looking for a motion to approve? Okay. We then look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve this week's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. We have no ABCs or letters of support today, but we do have some discussion underneath Fee for Local Use and Liquid Fuels. We're going to welcome up Ann Mezner for a mid-year program update and a presentation here, and then we're also going to be talking through some letters we've received from local municipalities and their partners regarding some of our transportation funding.
I was getting ready to have to do it, Manny, like the old-fashioned way.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. I'm going to be throwing a lot of information at you, so feel free to interrupt me if you would like, or I can answer questions after my presentation. What we do per our ordinance for Fee for Local Use is to provide a mid-year and an end-of-year update, so that's what I'm doing today, is the mid-year. I've also thrown some other information in because we are getting to the point where we're building some programming and just want to give folks a heads-up on that. Because as we progress through the year, we're going to have some decisions that we are going to have to make. So way back in August of 17, the county developed this local transportation funding program, and the emphasis was Fee for Local Use, Liquid Fuels, and Act 13, Bridge Funding. And in the last couple of years, we have been building to get roadmap funding, which is federal funding. And this has really helped us create some flexibility for our funds to help municipalities as well as our efforts to improve transportation in the county. And you'll see later in the agenda how it helps our multimodal grant applications and transportation alternative applications that municipalities are attempting to win. This is a lot of text, so bear with me here, but wanted to just kind of show what the revenues have been over the last several years. At the end of last year, our balance was just a little over $1.75 million. We received, if you, we put the receipt and the interest together, roughly $270,000 this year in Fee for Local Use, and so we're just above $2 million in our receive for Fee for Local Use. And over the last several years, what we have done is supported both road and bridge projects, and that's why it's divided in the expenditures to help clarify that, because what is happening is for every dollar spent on local bridges, we earn a dollar for roadmap, and that's why that's important. You'll see, there's a, there's two negatives there, and that was done last year because the projects being supported by Port Matilda and Milesburg, they thought that they were going to have reduced costs. That has not occurred for one of the projects, which you will see later in the agenda, just wanted to highlight that. But that, that kind of gives us our end-of-year balance in terms of expenditures for last year, which was just under a million. And then what we did this, this year in March is dedicated the funds from last year, the Fee for Local funds that we received, to essentially our bridge bundles and one project in Snowshoe Township. And what that is doing is helping us get, for the bridge bundles, more funding for roadmap. So we do have some funds that at some point this year, we'll need to make a decision on what to do with, but it is just kind of a heads-up.
Before you go, when I look at these numbers and you see, you know, seven-figure numbers and you see interest earned on that money, $469, you know...
Yeah, it's an unusual amount.
It shows you kind of the challenge that we have, you know, as we move forward with investing our funds, because it doesn't pay to keep them around the way it used to when money was earning six, you know, eight or better percent. Now it's negligible at best, which I just had to point that out.
Yeah, it's definitely different this year than as you can see from previous years, so it's not helping us. Okay. So I just wanted to kind of give an update on the projects that Fee for Local Use has funded, and you'll see on the left-hand side, the award year, the status. There are two older projects you'll see in the middle. I could not find them. They predate me. I think they're done, but I didn't want to put it in writing until I actually got confirmation, but I'm fairly certain they're complete. But this just shows how we are progressing in terms of getting projects completed into design, as well as multimodal funding grants that we are supporting our municipalities. I wanted to jump then to Liquid Fuels, just to kind of give an update. Last year, we received $163,000. Our allocation this year was $75,000 and some change. We are continuing to lose dollars, so PennDOT is telling me we will roughly receive $150,000. So each, each year, we have unfortunately not been able to fund as many projects that we would like for our annual funding program. So this fall, just like previous years, would like to suggest a schedule for distribution of the county liquid fuels to municipalities, and it's very similar to previous years. So maybe next Tuesday, you can consider the schedule so we can work on getting the applications out and folks can start working on those applications.
In terms of that Liquid Fuels number, from recollection, it used to be upwards of $200,000.
Yes.
And so I'd be curious to see how much COVID has played into, I mean, you know, with, you know, people driving less or more fuel-efficient vehicles, but COVID maybe, hopefully we'll see an uptick in that, but that's probably a lower amount, so, okay. It's good to be aware of that.
Yes, it's a good point. Last year, it was impacted by COVID. This year is definitely impacted by COVID, but with alternative transportation and electric vehicles, PennDOT is actually not optimistic that we will go above to our more typical levels.
Okay. Thanks, Ann.
Just real quick, Fee for Local Use and Roadmap, like I had said before, for every dollar we dedicate to bridges, we are eligible for a dollar of roadmap funding. And just wanted to kind of point out that this is supporting our Center County Bridge Bundle significantly. We are swapping out the original Act 13 funds, so we can keep committing dollars to get those roadmap funds. So at this point, we have just over 1.4 million dedicated to bridges, and we would like in the near future for commissioners to consider the allocation, the June allocation this year, to be swapped with the Bridge Bundle Act 13 fund, so we keep getting closer to that $2 million. And if we do for the June allocation, we would, we would be in excess of 1.7. Just a couple other things. Since it is federal funding, we have to follow a lot of federal guidance, and staff is working with District 2 to find some bridges that are in poor condition. That is a requirement. They also have to exceed 20 feet in length. So we have a very preliminary list. We're meeting with three municipalities to see their level of interest, and hopefully the timing works in terms of their budget season, that they can determine what their local match can be. I'm getting the sense from these municipalities that they cannot commit the full 20%. These bridges that we are looking at are in excess of a million, up to 1.7 million to either rehab or replace. So we're, we're working with them to see what they can provide, but we're anticipating that the municipalities will be coming to the county for some assistance. The other part of that is because it is federal funding, we have to document it through the federal process, and that's why we have to amend our Center County Metropolitan Planning Organization Transportation Improvement Program. So we would like to amend that this year for preliminary engineering if all the stars align, and then finish up with the next tip update with the remaining dollars for the project. Finally, we also have Act 13. It's been several years since there's been a discussion about Act 13, and the last allocation was done in '18 for the Center County Bridge Bundle Project, so we're returning those funds into the, into the pot. We are waiting for an older project to finish to get a better balance in terms of what the dollars are. They're almost done, but we're estimating roughly $1 million can go to poor bridges in the county, which is great, and we, we can use these dollars as a local match for something like roadmap or something else that would come up.
Going back to that million-dollar balance, that, that can be used, as you indicated, as a local match, but it also, there's no, there's no restriction as to what bridges that fixes. In other words, we don't have that 20-foot span. We don't have any of the other...
I have to check on that for you. That part I am not sure.
Okay. But certainly, using that as, as match money would be very helpful. You know, there's, although money doesn't, doesn't have the value long-term, as we indicated earlier, having the money around for projects like this is helpful, because we can actually get some things done then. So a lot of municipalities, particularly the smaller ones, as most of these bridges are in, do not have the resources to, you know, come up with the match money or some of the other costs that may be attributed to this. Appreciate your hard work there.
I just keep plugging along. So a couple things to think about for the future. The schedule, if the commissioners could consider approving that next week for the Liquid Fuels. We, just as a side note, we do consider Fee for Local Use in that program traditionally, but we may not this year just because of our swap. That's not to say it can't happen, but the next item will be also, also in today's agenda, is reviewing the municipal support request for funding that had been previously allocated in previous years for multimodal transportation grants and transportation alternative grants. Then the third item is the Bridge Bundle Swap. I'm estimating August might be a good time to do that. And then the fourth item would be periodic updates for the rest of the year on our transportation funding. So that's enough of me talking. Did you have any questions?
No. No need to...
Very thorough. Appreciate that.
Extraordinarily helpful, Ann. It's good to have a refresher on this every so often, just to get the full picture. We've been talking about the roadmap bridges a lot, but it's good to get a sense of the overall system as well. Any other questions or comments for Ann on the presentation before we go into the four letters from our partner municipalities? Okay. All right.
Actually, do we have a number roughly of how many deficient bridges there are in Center County at this stage?
So it is, it's a bit challenging, because we're finding that weather events are deteriorating some bridges a little faster than anticipated, but at this point, we, for, for the roadmap process, we are considering six bridges. So there are, there are plenty out there, and those are over 20 feet. Those are not under 20.
Those are your million-and-a-half-plus expenses as well, so you're factoring that well into the future. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Then we'll go into the letters of support of each, each of these as well.
Yes. So as part of the application process for both DCED and the new program, I'll kind of put that in quotes, the Transportation Alternative Program, each municipality needs confirmation that their funding is still there for them to use. confirmation that their funding is still there for them to use as a match. And even though DCED is not requiring a match right now, it puts these municipalities in a better light, that they're very serious about these projects. And so what we have are three letters to confirm funding from Port Matilda Borough, Milesburg Borough, and Gregg Township, so they can apply to the DCED multimodal transportation grant for this funding cycle. The one change that in previous, last year, there had been a modification by Milesburg to reduce their funding. And they are now bumping it up again, because unfortunately, you know, length of time, construction costs, it just is becoming this challenge. So Milesburg is asking for the original funding of 19 of $50,000. And Port Matilda is asking for $55,000, which was the same request as last year. Gregg Township is also asking for $100, which was the same request as last year. So those are for multimodal, the DCED grant cycle. The fourth one is from the Township of Ferguson. They had not done applications last year. They were regrouping and trying to decide what to do. And they believe that they have a better chance of getting support with the PennDOT Transportation Alternatives Grant that just opened up this year. And they would like confirmation of the $50,000, in this case, it's liquid fuels. So it's kind of a lot of letters, but they would all appreciate the support.
Is the $50,000 liquid fuels, is that out of, that's out of last year's fiscal year or this year?
That was actually two years ago, and they kind of put their grant writing on hold for a year, and now they're trying again.
We have a placeholder for that money. Okay. Thank you.
Any questions on any of the letters before we would, and essentially what we're doing is we would, the action we'd be taking is to move the four letters to the municipalities saying that we would support their funding requests or placeholder, whatever that would look like. But any feedback, further questions on that? Okay, hearing none, we look for a motion to add those letters to next week's consent agenda.
Motion to add the letters of support for the four municipalities, which are Port Matilda Borough, Milesburg Borough, Gregg Township, and Ferguson Township, to next week's consent agenda.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, the motion is carried. Thank you again, Ann. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well done.
Okay, we'll turn it over now to Margaret for an administrator's report and Resolution 1 of 2021.
Thank you very much. In accordance with Resolution 1 of 2021, the county administrator was granted authority to sign contracts on behalf of the Board of Commissioners if those contracts are $10,000 or less and have technically already been approved in our 2021 budget. During the second quarter of 2021, there were 23 contracts that met that criteria for my ability to sign on your behalf, and I will provide you with a list of those 23 contracts.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. No questions at this point, but we'll, we can, this is the official report, and we can get back with any questions at a later time. Okay, all right. Any discussion items? Anything we wanted to discuss today?
Actually, there is. One of the challenges, I think, that our board is acutely aware of, and I think the public is becoming more aware of, is in our organization, we have two 24-hour facilities that really are struggling right now to maintain the employee component to be successful. That being our 911 emergency communications and our correctional facility. And I think as we move forward over the next couple of days, I don't know that I'd like to classify it as an emergency, but severely urgent would be, I think, significant. And I believe, starting with some conversations even today, and probably action as close as Thursday, I would welcome conversation from our board to correct some of the deficiencies, perhaps, in the pay scales that are keeping us from employing the proper complement of people in our, in those two, particularly those two organizations, and it may extend further. But that being said, we also began initiating the conversation for an overall comprehensive salary review for our entire organization. But we are in a position right now where we need to hire corrections officers and telecommunications, and we are, I think, in a position where we need to have some stern conversations about how we make those things happen. So I would just like to bring that up as a, and I think we're all acutely aware of that, but just to put it on the record for.
Absolutely. I think we, in both those organizations, we are running in the red. And you can only, you can run in the red for a little bit, but, or in terms of, you know, the speed that they're going. And they can only do that to a certain point, until we have challenges. And so we're at the point now where we have American Rescue Plan dollars to be able to spend and invest for some pay that would be able to assist those 24/7 operations and do two things. Be appreciative of the work that's been done so far currently because of the short staffing. And second is recruit and attract and retain folks from the public. And I think we are aligned on Thursday to put this on the agenda for action. And of course, we'll have to loop in the controller as he's a vote on salary board, but I think it's apt, and we need to act this week. And I think we're all on the same page with that. But appreciate you bringing it to the.
Running on.
Absolutely, yep, absolutely.
That we're urgently.
And with that, then, we have, you know, many other organizations that are, while they're not 24/7, they play integral roles to county government and the operations that we need to do. And so I think also looking at ways that we can assist them, but also appreciating the fact that we are doing the salary study. So it's an issue we want to confront, but want to be open about it and how we go about it, and justify our next decision points and moves. But yeah, I think it's, we're going to slate it for this Thursday to have a vote and talk about, you know, taking action on it. And we have some executive sessions that I think we're going to be holding specifically on this to try to get some more data and information on it. But absolutely. So I appreciate you bringing it up, Commissioner, and putting it on the record. Thank you. Commissioner Higgins, any feedback, thoughts, comments on that?
Well, as you mentioned, all of the county departments are critical, but these are two that are 24/7. And 911 Emergency Communications is essentially very much public-facing. So I know we've already put a few programs in place to try to increase recruiting for those two departments. Obviously, we need to do more. And thanks to the American Rescue Plan, we do have the resources available. So yeah, definitely, let's have some more meetings on this very quickly and add some additional initiatives to more employees for those departments. Obviously, in addition to the pay, there's a pretty generous pension package, including Blue Cross, Blue Shield Healthcare, pension, sick days, vacation days, et cetera. So yeah, definitely, let's get working on this right away.
So we have consensus that we'll be putting this on the agenda for action on Thursday, but in the meantime, we'll have continued discussions regarding this. So, okay, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Okay, thank you. All right. And then Commissioner Higgins, we'll keep it with you for the check run.
Sure, we have a check run, the amount of $517,795.65, about a third of our normal size for a check run. Sort of funny, I already prechose the check of the week, which is to Evan Consoles Incorporated for $8,414.72. And that was for our 911 Emergency Communications Department. That company manufactures work stands, desks, and a broad variety of technology attachment points, so that our 911 telecommunicators can have multiple screens in front of them, and so that they are comfortable during their shift, 24/7, literally 365. So I'm kind of glad I happened to choose that check of the week. So we'd like to make the motion to approve the check run dated July 9.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the check run. Any final discussion on the check run? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. The checks are approved. Okay. And then we'll turn it over to Commissioner Dershowitz for a voter registration report.
All right. This morning, we have 104,809 registered voters in Center County. That's down 121 from my last report. And the highlight looks like 44,003 Democratic registrants, 136 Green Party, 685 Libertarian, 13,937 No Affiliation, 42,183 Republican. And when you add 3,865 other smaller party registrants, you get the 104,809. The feature party of the day is the other party. And the other party has 433 registrants today. The precinct feature of this morning is going to be State College East Central 2, which is precinct number 29, which votes at the State College Borough Building. In the primary election, there were a total registration of 2,260. 69 ballots were cast in May, and the turnout, that leaves a turnout percentage of 3.05%. And as you may have guessed, that's largely a student precinct, so a lot of those folks were not around for the election. The folks that made it happen in precinct number 29, the judge of elections is Jordan Emily, the minority inspector is Brian Emhoff, the majority inspector is William Lehman, the clerks were Addison Albert and Willem Einhooven. And again, we want to thank State College Borough for allowing us to use their facility and the opportunity to get people out to vote, which I'm sure will be a little bit greater numbers than 3.05% in November. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have no announcements at this time. Any executive sessions to report?
Yes, the Board of Commissioners met in an executive session on Wednesday, July 7th, from noon until 12:30 to discuss a personnel matter.
Thank you, Margaret. Seeing no one here from the press, we will look for a motion to adjourn at 10:39.
If there's no questions from the press, motion to adjourn at 10:39.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjourning, do so by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you all.